I'm going to call this Council Work Sessions order at approximately 5:30. First on the agenda is roll call.
Council President Schilling.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Beriantos.
Here.
Counselor Briggs.
Here.
Counselor Collins.
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Jantsch.
Here.
Counselor Shane.
Here.
Counselor Verden is excused.
With that, we dive straight into the SEDCOR Annual Report.
Yeah, thank you, Council President Schilling. So I'll invite Charlie Mitchell to come up and introduce our guests.
So tonight, we have Eric Anderson and Alex Proskovas from SEDCOR to give you their annual report and services of the life in the city.
Who's the pilot, who's the co-pilot?
Uh, he's a merchant. I missed the call.
Good evening. I'm Eric Anderson. Eric Anderson with SEDCOR. Thanks for having us here. You can drive.
Already, please, if you want to just air it down.
Oh, sorry. Yes, so just as a reminder, we're 501(c)(6) nonprofit, regional, three-county Regional Economic Development Organization. We have a contract with the City of Dallas to do economic development services and also support our regional work in the three counties we serve. In a nutshell, we leverage public and private partnerships to successfully grow, retain, and attract high-value jobs and capital investment. And we've gone through a bit of a planning, our planning process with our board and came up with a kind of a one-word mission of opportunity. So we are actively going out and talking to the businesses, looking for opportunities. We like to be there to listen first, think creatively about solutions to what their issues or opportunities are, act with agility, and we build solutions to last. And our goal is to have, to see businesses invest, stay and grow in the Mid Valley, benefit from economic development incentives. So we work with our, using old technology, but our rolodex of resources that are out there to be sure we have access and our businesses have access to resources and forging partners, new partnerships among the businesses we work with.
Do you want to deal with questions now, or do you want to save them to the end?
Oh, you can ask them.
That very last bullet, the forging of new partnerships, how do you, how do you do that? It's a wonderful thing. How do you implement it? What's your method of making it happen?
Well, one example that I like to use is as we talk to a business and they have opportunities to grow, and they may need, we're looking at a lot of the supply chain around agriculture, and we've been able to leverage our relationship with growers to talk to businesses and identify with our producers in the region, that there are local opportunities to grow for them, kind of like growing the economy from within the region. And as a result of a kind of a one-off project that we did that was so successful, we have a farmer growing 160 acres from one of our manufacturers in the region now, food manufacturer, we've actually started up a little event. It's called the Locally Grown Supply Chain. And what we're trying to do is introduce our food processors in the region to growers. And it was kind of like farmer speed dating. Not all of that, but it was a way that the businesses could actually say, here's, to meet growers and say, here's what we're looking to do, here's what we need, here's our timeframe, here's how we want it delivered, and be able to make those relationships.
I'm glad you have that bullet on there because that's the kind of thing that doesn't get a lot of high visibility, but it pays long-term dividends.
If I could, we, more closer to home, we have a company, Miamon County, that was running van pools to get past a transportation barrier for their staff. And we had a little company just outside Dallas having some, you know, hey, I heard about this, or could you connect me and whatnot. And so we have that sort of robust relationship network to be able to make those kind of connections.
That's great.
And so really, just like, if there's one tool for one company, what you'll see in a lot of our presentation, right, is if there's a tool that we're using or that a company is using somewhere else, well, we know about it, we'll talk about it, and we'll, hey, you should, you talk to this person, or can you talk to that person? So part of the work, that bullet point takes a really long time, I would say. Right? So it's a relationship-driven kind of bullet point, and so...
Well, like I said, it's long-term.
Yeah, so sometimes it takes, I mean, generally, I would say, the way it works, and as a sort of Polk County guy and do, or sort of field staff, a lot of times I hand out a business card, get real excited about something, and then somebody promptly forgets, totally fine. But then eight months from now, you know, you get a phone call, hey, I have a problem, or hey, I remembered that you knew a guy, which is kind of our internal tagline, slash joke, slash recent address, like, but whatever, right? Yeah, or gal, sorry. But yeah, so we, you know, and so a lot of times, that's how that kind of plays out. And so, yeah, that's the fun part of the work, but it's, you can't sort of will it to, you know, to happen necessarily.
Actually, that's a good segue to kind of the next topic about business retention expansion, because one of the projects, or one of the photos there is of a visit that Alex put together for Dallas School District.
Yeah, so that top left-hand photo is of Charlie, so Charlie and then Principal of Dallas High School, and also CT Corporator, Bill Massey, and I went to, and SEDCOR staff as well, went to Newburgh High School to see Tiger Manufacturing, which is a machine shop that's actually run in the high school. And it's pretty exciting, it's exciting to see sort of, I would say, innovative approaches to workforce development. So the guy in the middle, the black shirt, is Alvin, and so he's actually running this machine shop that's staffed by students, except he's not running it. They elect a CEO every year. And so it's a senior this year who's running this machine shop. And so she gets to do all the books and invoicing and all that stuff. And then Alvin, actually, I want to say, a third or maybe a half of his workforce at this point is staffed by students that ran through this program over the last number of years. And so, of course, we're looking at it as a, hopefully, replicable model that you could do here. You do need an Alvin, it's helpful to have an Alvin who can dedicate this kind of time because he's in the school every day. But it's just an interesting, it's kind of an interesting way to, that he's solving his workforce challenge. And then the high school, the principal of the high school in Newburgh, she's talking about now, and she is solving her own workforce problem by hiring students to be IAs in the elementary school. So she's got, you know, she can't find classified staff. And so it's really just a matter of, to your, you know, just the same point is, hey, we hear about this thing, why don't we go look at it? And Charlie and I actually were at a conference for Willamette Workforce Partnership, I think, last summer, where we initially heard about, you know, we saw a panel and had a conversation, and sort of that's how it plays out.
You said Bill?
Alvin actually owned the area. He does, sorry, I'm sorry. Alvin owns the area manufacturing.
So he's a manufacturer that was trying to identify how to improve his own workforce issues and work with the school district to actually put together, was basically an opportunity to train students on, you know, for him to be able to hire, and they hire a bunch of folks that have graduated out of Tiger Manufacturing.
You said Bill went along on that trip?
He did.
Cool.
Also on here are a couple of photos of the folks at Dreamies Creamery and Crystal Creek Dairy Service. They've been able to, we've been able to do quite a bit of work with them as they've grown over the last year or so. When we talk about the relationships that we have, one of the groups that we've worked really closely with over the last couple of years is the Oregon Entrepreneurs Network. And that's a statewide organization, but they've kind of attached themselves to the SEDCOR region as an opportunity to reach out particularly to food and beverage manufacturers. That's one of their key industries, and it's one of our key industries. And as a result, we hosted a Oregon, Oregon Angel Food Marketplace, which was, I think, 50, 50 food manufacturers that we host here in the region. And we had buyers from various companies, including New Seasons Market, Market of Choice, I think even Burgerville was walking around there trying to figure out where they can get product. And it gave, gave folks like Dreamies an opportunity to meet those folks as well as the public. We had a couple hundred people show up as a result, and we're looking forward to doing that again this, this next year. I know you've been working with them on other opportunities, too.
Yeah, and we also, you'll see another photo on the right there, so we gave them an award as SEDCOR Entrepreneur of the Year, just for all the work they've been doing, obviously went from food truck to parking order and everything along the way. So we love them and try to bring people out to sample their wares, so.
And I included Open Road in here because, you know, one, it's, you know, when you drive by, you just kind of look at that and go, what a great investment for the area. But we're trying to promote that as much as possible, just because it's a really good reflection on, this is a company that's, you know, kind of grown here, raised here, and investing in the community. So it really does well for Dallas to be able to say, these are the kinds of companies, and this is the kind of investment that's happening in the region right now.
And that's also one of the companies that has chosen to use Enterprise Zone, which is a program that we manage right from property tax to the program. So we're the zone manager. And so I had a conversation this morning with these officers about, about their project. So it's, yeah, it's all in mind.
That is something new for SEDCOR, working with Charlie. That was something we added to, we manage the Salem and North Marion Enterprise Zones, and as a result, we've got a pretty good infrastructure in place with our staff. So we've been able to add on the Dallas Monmouth Independence Zone as well. Around recruitment industrial lands, that's another aspect of the work that we do, include a couple photos of projects that the City of Dallas has prioritized around commercial and industrial development that we're providing our, lending our expertise to and engaged in the planning, planning discussions. I don't know if you have anything to add on?
No, we've sent on a couple committees and have gone through the Locklear also, and so, yeah, that's, that's why I'm...
And with the mill site in particular, we've been submitting that pretty routinely to Business Oregon for industry leads, the industries that are looking for acreage, particularly with rail. It's a, industrial land is becoming an increasingly difficult thing to find in the region. And the greenfield sites, the ones that are easy to redevelop, have pretty much been developed or in control of developers. So for us, it's really important to be working with the community and the owners to identify what resources are out there to help make that site ready to go. And we've had a variety of different industries looking at it. Nothing has, you know, bitten fully yet, but I think it shows the, it's a good reflection on the value, the different types of industries that are looking at Dallas and looking at that site. We've had a low-carbon cement manufacturer, and I just was following up with them today. They have, it's an East Coast company in Massachusetts, and they just received some pretty significant funding from the federal government for, in the industrial manufacturing decarbonization funding that's available. They are setting up a shop in Massachusetts to produce kind of environmentally friendly cement, concrete. And they are already planning for what they want to do in the West Coast. And we were able to connect with them early on and give them information on the Dallas site, and they particularly look for old industrial sites, brownfield sites, because it's another aspect for them, is they like to be able to clean them up and reuse them as well.
Regarding the mill site, have you, your conversations extended as far as talking to the railroad, or is it premature to ask that question?
No, not at all, premature. As a matter of fact, we've had a meeting, is it Thursday?
This week.
Yeah, this Thursday.
Because from where I can see, that rail line's in pretty poor shape.
Well, you know, when we've talked to them in the past, there's a part of me that knows better, but then the part of me that actually quotes them and says, well, here's what it's going to cost, and it's doable. So we've got emails from them, but folks that know the rail line better than I do, have also said, there's no way they can do it in that time period with that amount of funding. So they have new staff people now, so I think this is, this meeting on Thursday, we introduce, yeah, reintroduced to their staff folks. And one of the first things we did was introduce them to our team here, as well as the, get them information on that mill site, so let them know where there's industrial land within their railroad, you know, for their economic development team.
Yeah, the cost per mile of new or upgraded rail is shocking to people who've never heard it.
Oh, sure, yeah. Some of the other industries that we've submitted site for include vertical agriculture and mass timber. And I put some pictures of, we recently took a tour of the PDX, the new terminal at PDX. We talk about this a lot because it's got some pretty significant Mid Valley content in it. Frares engineered wood in the San Diego Canyon, that is supplying nine acres of wood, of mass timber for the roof structure, for the ceiling. And when we talk about, you know, traditional industries and technology, you can point at parts of that ceiling, and the port can tell you what forest that timber was grown in. It's pretty, pretty impressive. Also, a little closer to home, we've got Xenoforest Products is doing the flooring for that facility as well. So we're trying to tell people in the community that if you're not flying out of Salem and you're going up to PDX, that, you know, we're going to be very proud of the fact that the ceilings and the floors are going to be local content from the region. And for us, that last picture on the bottom right is what the port, Portland has planned for Terminal Two up there, T2, in their industrial area. They're putting together a mass timber innovation center, and that's going to have resources for workforce training, for new product design, and also with manufacturing techniques and specifically looking at workforce housing design using mass timber. And we've connected with the Port of Portland more recently as a result of taking the tour and kind of reconnecting with their economic development team to say, hey, we've got a lot of mass timber opportunities in this region as well. I mean, you think of a mill site like the Warehouser site here, that provides a great resource for us to be able to market for businesses that are looking at that industry. Yes.
Am I the only one who doesn't know what workforce housing means?
Oh, oh, sorry.
What's workforce housing?
Workforce, because I know when we talk about affordable housing, capital A, that has, you know, affordable, has certain designations. For us, workforce housing is, if you looked at it from a household income, it's usually targeting the 80% to 100% household income range, and it's basically housing for workforce. You know, when people are coming in and redeveloping new neighborhoods, they may be putting in nice houses, but they may not be houses that are affordable for the people that work in your community. And one of the projects that we've been working on here in the region, this was over in Newburgh, we were working with ADAC, the, you know, dental equipment company there, it's our biggest, one of the biggest manufacturers in the state. And, you know, we asked them, how was house business, and one of their challenges was we have trouble keeping and finding new workers because there aren't houses that are available to them in Newburgh. And we found out that there are other employers working with the City of Newburgh, other employers in that area that were facing the same issue. So we, we've been staffing, our colleague, Abishan Stohr, is staffing a workforce housing consortium of major employers in Newburgh, and we were able to attract some funding from Representative Scharf to actually fund a revolving loan fund to help encourage developers to do different types of things, communities to look at SDCs and other issues. And if you're, if you're an employer that has extra land, like George Fox University or Friendsview Retirement Home, maybe leveraging the land that you have to work with a developer. All of these things can help lead to having housing that, you know, the employers can actually sponsor, quote unquote, and be affordable for their, for their employees.
Is the concept that I would then have to work for, say, Kim's the, the big company, would I then have to work for Kim in order to buy one of these workforce houses?
I think it depends, and there's a lot of different models out there. I mean, some of this is just getting housing built that theoretically employers, you know, employees could, you know, could afford. Some of it can be employers that actually sponsor housing being developed on their land for employers, for employees to come in. And they may work, they live there a couple of years, and they may get to a point where they can afford their own home in the region and get settled in, and that kind of recycles in for another employer to, another employee to use.
But in the vein of trying to take those sort of models from across the region, we just finished a white paper that basically documents the entire process.
Is that available on your website?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, but we've been trying to, it's a replicable model, and we're trying to encourage people to think a little bit differently, also just in terms of like building construction things. So we did a, did a whole workshop around it about a year ago.
Okay, I'm going to put that on my to-do list to read. Thank you, and thank you for helping me understand.
Oh, of course.
Because originally, when you said those terms, it just, I don't know, my little hackles got up, like, it felt yucky at first, but, okay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, from Newburgh, they're really constrained on land and whatnot, and so Friendsview Retirement Community and the hospital, there's a few other bigger employers had identified that as a pretty big challenge to recruitment and retention of their employees, just commutes, because people couldn't work with their own folks. And so really, it's been a four-year conversation for us, maybe atypical for an economic development organization to be sort of wholeheartedly jumping in on this, but it's, we're, and if we take an industry-driven approach to these things, and industry has, you know, has identified that as a huge challenge.
Would it be safe for me to assume that there's some understanding in the white paper how this stays away from company housing and indentured servitude?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking forward to reading that. Thank you.
We're working with an organization called the Missing Middle Housing Fund, and that's kind of the term of art in this, is the missing middle, and that's the group that houses aren't just, they're either being built for affordable housing, you know, with capital A, with subsidized, you know, grant funding, or they're, you know, market-rate housing, which can, you know, markets are getting expensive, real estate's getting expensive.
Can I have you move the keyboard closer to you and therefore the mic closer to you and speak more directly into the mic? We have people that can't hear.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
So at any rate, I think, you know, but back to the mass timber conversation, they are looking at ways to make workforce housing out of mass timber, too, and all these things kind of lead up to a really good opportunity for our region, I think, and having industrial sites, particularly in a community that has a history of wood products and forest industry, I think is a really positive thing for, for us.
Did you want to mention?
No, personally, I have my own idea.
Oh, yeah, and SEDCOR has, you know, we work with our colleague organizations under an organization called the Oregon Economic Development Association to try to support resources coming, you know, through the legislature for economic development for communities and for businesses. And this year, what's the bill number?
HB 4042.
4042 is for regionally significant industrial sites. And the funding would support communities to be able to put in infrastructure that's required to get a site ready to go and to attract investment. And it's a fund that was a successful program that ran out, and this is kind of re-establishing the program and refunding it. And we supported that, our logo's on the letter that went through, and hopefully that's funding that would be available to the City of Dallas for a regionally significant site. A little bit about entrepreneurship, this is something that we've gotten ourselves more involved with the last few years. One of the things that we've tried to do is, you know, look at organizations that have an opportunity with, to leverage what they're doing. The Latino Business Alliance is headquartered in Salem, they got $100,000 to start up a revolving loan fund for entrepreneurs, a microloan program. And we talked to them about what kind of resources around training and business resources are there to help encourage businesses to not only apply, but be able to repay and start their business. As a result, we've gone through now our third round of our Latino Micro Enterprise Development Program, working with entrepreneurs, and once again, a model that's expandable. We're starting in McMinnville on a round of that this year, and I know we've already talked with folks here in the county about trying to start something up here in the future as well. And also, we just submitted the paperwork, the application for the Mid Willamette Valley Regional Innovation Hub, and that's a state program that's going to hopefully fund and provide us resources for not just staff. We had a venture catalyst position that actually worked with some Dallas businesses to help them get their pitch down, to be able to attract funding, to, how to talk to a bank, how to talk to investors. And also, we're hoping that this allows us for more funding for events, coffee, coffee clubs, pub talks, anything that gets entrepreneurs together with each other to kind of compare notes. We bring in speakers. It's just something that we've, we've tried to do sporadically, and this will give us a couple of years of funding to really come up with a program that's hopefully sustainable. And just some of the things that we're continuing to work on, I mentioned the supply chain work, but I mean, really for us to, to identify ways to grow the economy from within the economy, and I think the more that we can work with companies to identify where their needs are and work with businesses to supply them. You know, here in the, in the region, here in Dallas with Ascendec, we've been feeding them information on some of the supply chain, information that's around semiconductors because that is one of the industries that they serve. And I think this is more, more of the type of information that we're getting and resources from the state, from Business Oregon, to really try to make those connections to the region. Also talked about workforce availability. Certainly, those issues with our manufacturers have led us not only to getting into housing projects, but also childcare projects. Once again, not something that SEDCOR does itself, but we convene, identify partners, and allow manufacturers to identify ways to provide childcare resources for their employees. And then also, as I mentioned before, the industrial land inventory, we're getting quite a lot of this, the, what they call the low-hanging fruit sites have been taken. So we're working hard to be sure that we have a long-term supply of industrial land as well in the region. And that's why the former mill sites and having resources to clean them up is so important. And just, and just some quick numbers on our marketing, that's, that's one of the things that we do. We had a pretty active last quarter. The nice thing about, we did our awards plus a couple other events, and we ended up getting picked up by a lot of the newspapers. I O gave us a lot of press, which also allowed us to get our award winners, like Dreamies Creamery, some press as well. They also got a nice piece in the Salem Reporter. And, yeah, same thing for this most recent quarter, and just some examples of the stories that we've been able to get and the attention we've been able to get. Happy to answer questions.
Are those reports in that marketing materials subscription base, or can we get those or put on an email list to obtain those on a regular basis?
The marketing reports?
Well, we, we have a weekly newsletter that goes out every Friday that you can subscribe to. Is it email? Email, yeah. How do we, how do we get on that list? We can, we'll add you, how about that? But, yeah, the marketing reports, those, these reports, like these numbers specifically, were a lot of media placements, so newspaper articles and both printed and online. And then we had a couple, you know, Capital Press, for example, ran a couple articles about us, and just tried to promote some of the stuff that we were doing, so. Yeah, so we're kind of, we're trying to, SEDCOR is not a, you know, household name necessarily, nor maybe we want it to be, but also it's important to highlight the companies in the region that are doing good work, and so these are opportunities to do that.
And our marketing communications person's really upped our game when it comes to our LinkedIn and Facebook and even dragging us onto Instagram, so we're all getting better at it.
Got a follow-up question. So how does, what is the biggest detriment Dallas has right now in attracting new businesses, industrial, commercial, whatever it might be? And what can we do to augment that, if you could help that out?
I mean, I think one of the pieces is working with the, with the city for the TGM grant, and then also the other concurrent, I don't know what the project is called necessarily, TGM, the Creek, Silver Ash Creek? Yeah, project. And so those pieces, I mean, the site is, is challenging, there's no question. And so those two concurrent projects are, I'm, you know, involved in both of those. I think that's, that's kind of a big one, just for viability for site viability and for sort of attractiveness to somebody to take, you know, take a, take a purchase.
Yeah, you've mentioned helping out in McMinnville. So how long have you guys been in existence? And can you talk about development that has been a sustained development over a number of years and what you've learned from that?
Well, we've been around for 42 years. Alex is our senior staff person at this point. Most of us have come on in the last five or so years. And I'm sorry, the sustainable, I have a question.
Successful projects.
Yeah, successful projects. You've mentioned McMinnville, but talk about projects that you've had here for a number of years, like four to five years.
Well, I think, you know, right now, if you look at some of the recruitments that we've done, Amazon coming in was one that we were quite involved with five years ago. That was a site in the Salem Amazon facility. They, we weren't as involved with the most recent one, just in Woodburn. I think one of the challenges we have for that is it's, they're looking at 2,000 workers, and I think we work very closely with an industry, a warehouse industry. a site in the Salem Amazon facility. They, we weren't as involved with the most recent one, just in Woodburn. I think one of the challenges we have for that is it's, they're looking at 2,000 workers. And I think we work very closely with an industry of warehouse and distribution companies here that were, didn't really look good for us to be saying, oh, we're bringing in 2,000 new jobs when there's not 2,000 workers for them. So that's one of our challenges right now, is being sure that what we, what we do as far as attraction is consistent with where the needs, what we have from a workforce perspective as well. Over time, some of the projects, even like Yamasa, the soy sauce company, they're going on 30 years here. And if you go into my office, our colleagues that used to run Sedcor, we've got a bunch of their first, first line of products from 30 years ago, because we were involved with that project as well. Most, most of the recruitments, I think, that you see popping up, we've done, just since I've been here, Home Depot, we've got one in the mix now that's being built is the Dollar General. Those are in Salem. Trying to think what else. We've had a long history of them.
Okay. And I had a question about workforce housing. So you're in a baby boomer generation. You know that there was workforce housing for World War II veterans that they came, when they came back from the war, and they were called projects. There were tenement buildings that were made for workers to be at a temporary basis. But what ended up happening is people would stay there for a long, long period of time, and what was a nice workforce housing became very dilapidated housing of poverty, drugs, and all kinds of stuff like that. So how do you, how do you remedy or how do you work through that?
Well, I mean, I think that there's several different models of workforce housing that, you know, when you, when you see the report that we've done, there's some examples. We reached out to the industry itself, the developers themselves, and said, hey, come up with proposals for workforce housing. So some of them are individual homes, you know, clustered homes. I think there's only one that was sort of more traditional multifamily, you know, large multifamily structure. You know, I think for us, it's trying to work with the employers that need the housing for their employees and identify what the mix is that they're looking for. But these would be, you know, mostly independently owned and either rented or potentially bought by, you know, and trying to build wealth for employers, employees as well.
Is that the subject of the white paper you referred to earlier?
Yes.
Yeah, go read that.
Yeah, that was, that was, I'm glad Alex brought that up, because that's, that was one of the, one of the requirements and one of our goals going into that is, well, whatever we did in Newburgh, we wanted to be replicable in other, in other places. So there's the models for other communities as well.
We've got about five more minutes before we need to wrap up. Are there any other questions from councilors?
How do you triage through a potential customer that comes to the area, maybe from Los Angeles or Seattle, that are, they just are fed up and they come to the area and they say, we have our business and we want to plant it somewhere here. We're going to employ 100 employees. How do we make Dallas your first thought, let's take you to Dallas? Or is it more of what their business is and what the property is we have available and what, what state of advancement and development that property is? How do you decipher who you put in front of that customer?
Good question. One of the benefits of being a regional organization is it's easier to get that customer here if we say we have a variety of product. So for us to have several communities that we can say, hey, if you, depending on what you need, you know, here in the type of industry and what kind of land you're looking for, for manufacturing, Dallas is top of mind for us because it is an industrial site here, it has rail access, it's a, and we know it's a community that supports that type of business. The, if it's somebody that's looking for like warehouse and distribution, it's a tougher sell over here. You know, they want to be, you know, within a couple, a couple miles of I-5.
And they probably want to be on the other side of the river.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So I mean, that's one of, that's one of the considerations. But we really try to give them enough information. So for example, here in Dallas, we also promote the Benton County, you know, Benton and Lynn workforce.
That doesn't help us.
Does help.
It does.
Because, yeah. Because for us to be able to say, you get access to the Salem workforce here in Dallas, part of the MSA, but also very, very easy access for folks from Corvallis to come up here and work, it allows us to show that you're kind of, you know, batting above your, fighting above your weight in that regard, that there's more opportunity for workforce. So we've had businesses that really liked that attraction, being able to be connected to like OSU. So from, from anything that's looking at sort of technology side, I mean, that helps us here. With Ascendec here, that also helps us, you know, from their supply chain perspective on the industries that they work with. So there's, there's a lot going for you right now here.
That's good to hear.
And you've got that sort of concurrent with some real challenges with industrial lands around the region. So I, I don't think it's too long out before somebody, you know, takes that Dallas, you know, the site that we have. The other, the other large site that we had in the community, you know, has been taken. So that's why, you know, the work that the community is doing on the, you know, trying to identify more commercial industrial land is really important for us here, because I think that's going to be the other key.
Okay.
Sometimes when you look, I always say this about Mill Creek, we've been talking for ages about the land hasn't been available there. And people are like, well, it's all, it's all greenfield. Now that there are buildings going up, people are like, oh, now we see. But, you know, those are four or five years in gestation, you know, sometimes. So that's why it takes a while. But I think the fact that the community is already investing and doing this work here is going to pay off.
And we have Charlie working his tail off.
Yeah, exactly. And he knows, and he knows where to bring us into.
But I mean that.
Any other quick questions? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Next up is CBDG grant proposals. And first on the list is B2 Community Care. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Council President Schilling. So just one, one note that I'll have. So we received a couple of different project proposals, one from B2 Community Care, who are coming up to the microphone. And then also another one from Polk Community Development Corporation. And so the city of Dallas is limited with community development block grant projects to three. In your staff report, it says two. I had to confirm this conversation with Arthur from Business Oregon, but we can have up to three active awarded grants at any one time. There's some, some strict guidelines on that, though. Once you have an awarded project, you're required to spend 60% of that funding that you receive within the first year of the grant award. So you have to make sure that, you know, the project that you say, yeah, let's apply for grant funding, is really ready to go. So that's one consideration you have to make, is just make sure, if you say, yes, we're going to be an applicant, the project needs to be, you know, prepared and ready to roll at the time we make application. The community development block grant applications are limited to local governments, so cities and counties. And so the two developers that are here tonight would partner with the city. We would be the applicant. We would be supporting their project. So because of that, I invited both projects to come in tonight to talk to the council. You're not making necessarily decisions tonight, you're just kind of learning what's out there, what the opportunities are in front of the city of Dallas. And then if we decide as a council that you would like to move forward with one of these projects, you know, we could do that and engage staff, working with their organizations to prepare applications for the community development block grant program. So with that, unless you have any questions, I mean, we can turn the time over to Blair Goldstein and his partner on the B2 Community Care project.
And before you start, just to make sure, try and move as close to the mic as you possibly can, because everybody's having troubles hearing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Blair Goldstein.
Scott Allred.
I'm one of the initial founders of B Squared, myself and my wife Bailey Goldstein. It's been some time since I've been in front of the city council here in Dallas. Our initial proposal for usage was for a conditional use permit for, in the CBD, CBD, CDB, Commercial Business District of downtown, excuse me, over on Main, or on Court Street, rather, for a adult day services daycare. We have since purchased a facility that used to be the private charter school on Main Street, or I guess it's Walnut and Main. So that's where our services have expanded to for the day services center. We also have purchased the adjacent schoolhouse next to it where we operate out of for employment services. Since then, the agency has grown quite a bit. We were able to acquire a behavioral health, mental health, housing grant to provide an alleviation for the state hospital's overflow, essentially for the houseless population, because there's a cyclical event of intermediate housing for those individuals who have recurring incidents that end up back in the state hospital and without a place to live after their short-term stabilization. So we're in the midst of creating a hybrid model for mental health and intellectual developmental disability services in Kaiser. So our proposal this evening is that we bring a mental health facility to the city of Dallas and Polk County as an assistive aid here. Some of the statistics that we would have for that are that, I can just start with the crisis intervention calls that I have requested from records here at DPD and Polk County being next to each other. In the past year, Dallas Police Department has responded to 270 crisis intervention calls for mental health services. And Polk County, the Sheriff's Department, has responded to 358 as well. So that's 628 total mental health services calls for crisis intervention. And neither one of those departments has a on-staff crisis therapist. Our hope is that we can bring in specifically trained crisis therapists to assist with some of those things in the area and alleviate some of the Polk County Behavioral Health Services that are continually enrolling patients annually. From the records and indications that they've stated over there, they're enrolling upwards of 1,500 individuals annually. This past year, they surpassed that number and have upwards of 40,000 individuals either inactive or actively being served by Polk County Behavioral Health Services. I was actually reached out to by head of their department to discuss this same grant as well. So we have a meeting with them this next week. But I would like to bring it to Dallas because they don't, there's no other independently operated or otherwise for adults in, in the city of Dallas. There was one that was going to be opened in 2021, but it never ended up coming to fruition. I can just go over some of the information additionally that we have here. So 11.4% of all adult Oregonians have struggled or reported struggling with either substance abuse or mental health disorders in the past. In the previous census, and Polk County Behavioral Health, or excuse me, IDD Services serves over 875 adults currently enrolled in their services. That's not to mention that there are independent brokerages that serve over 200 adults as well. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask real quick? So are you saying that for all of Polk County, you'll be bringing, you'll be servicing?
Yes.
People from the Oregon State Hospital?
That, that's for...
Here in Dallas?
Not here in Dallas, no. So our, our goal is to bring the mental health clinic to Dallas to assist in the alleviation of these services that are being local, because there's no other independent adult mental health services center.
And how is this different than what was going to go in at the Roosevelt Building?
So the, the county's project is a, is a behavioral health expansion of their services. It's required through state funding and a state agreement. And so that project is still on schedule to be constructed in Dallas, but it would be an extension of Polk County Services. They're looking at building it next to the Academy Building. And so that's still on, on target. What B Squared is offering is, and I apologize for calling it B2, I didn't know if it was B2 or B Squared.
No worries.
B Squared sounds fun. So what B Squared is offering is to have a mental health facility that is independent from a government, right? So it's not a government-run facility, it's run through a nonprofit organization as opposed to through the government.
And how are you funded?
Through Medicaid.
So it's government?
It's essentially, yeah, it's essentially, they're both funded through one way or the other federally funded, aid or assisted through the government services. One of the benefits of what we're trying to do with this is that we're going to offer some substance abuse alleviation, like classes, sources, things like that, that can assist with that. We plan on working with the Polk County jail here and hopefully some other areas as well to offer some combined probationary team efforts, essentially, to like work release, things like that, so that they're somewhere to go and like work during the day and then attend a program at night and then come back the next day to essentially ensure their means of staying sober and doing those types of steps. So there's additional facets that are going to be involved with just, other than just independent mental health services there.
One thing I'd like to add is, you know, in answer to your question how it's different, we have significantly more latitude in what we can do and how we do it. So it allows us to be just, you know, a little bit more active, I guess, a little bit more pinpointed in our approach in what we're going to be treating.
Kristen?
Yeah. So thank you for explaining that, and thank you for asking him, because that was one of my questions. So you'll be funded through Medicaid, through CCOs. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, CCOs?
Through a person's health card.
It would either be, well, that's one option of payment, but there's going to be independent therapists that are able to operate out of there as well.
And so how will your, so are you offering case management services or therapy services?
We're not a case management brokerage. We're a therapeutic option. So that's, that's a different thing.
So how will you be licensed?
Sorry?
How will you be licensed?
As a Medicaid agency. So it's an endorsement.
Through OHA, through APD, through ODDS?
For mental health services.
Through OHA, okay. So you would then need to develop relationships with the CCO in order to make this work. And so your therapists, I read your proposal thing. So your therapists will be working with co-occurring or comorbidity. How will they be certified and trained differently than the therapists that would be hired through, for example, Polk County Mental Health, to really be able to get at the specialties of working with the comorbidities of IDD and substance abuse, for example?
Well, it would just be an additional use of services being another brokerage, or excuse me, we're not a brokerage, another mental health services center that would help in the things that are not being met. Because the Polk County Services, after talking to them over there, they have, like I said, 1,500 individuals registering annually. They're already expanding, and they're the only brokerage that's in Polk County. And Dallas in itself, like I said, has no other adult option.
Right.
They only have a teen and child center that's open. The only other one that was about, that, that would have opened was in 2021, and it failed to do so.
Yeah. I, I do acknowledge that there are a sect of the population that by virtue of the fact that it's Polk County Behavioral Health, will be really hesitant to go forward with that. And having an independent provider of mental health services would be really important. But I would like to hear more about how you're going to make sure that the therapists that you're bringing in, I'm assuming they'll all be master's level therapists, not behavioral health providers, not QMHPs, but QMHAs, how they will be specially trained to deal with that co-occurring, that comorbidity. And you don't have to answer that question right now, but I think that that's a really important thing and often overlooked. Oftentimes, we see individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities being told by the therapy community, we can't support you because, because of your intellectual or developmental disability. And it's seeming to me, or maybe I want to read into your proposal, maybe this is me just wishful thinking, that what you're saying is that you're going to be able to meet that special need. So I'd like to hear a little bit more at some point why. But I think Carlos wants to talk some of that.
Yeah, I had a question also on the training, the level of training for therapists. Can you just kind of talk of that? And it's almost like in my mind, I think this looks like a peer-based training, or someone who'd gone through the program and then, you know, cleaned up and then had a chance to train to be a therapist. Is that what you're doing? Or are you getting fully trained therapists?
So in, in effect, that's, that could be a CRC counselor for rehabilitation purposes.
Can you... Can you, what is CRC?
A CRC would be rehabilitation or not a crisis or therapy counselor, but a rehabilitation and like a 12-step type of counselor for substance abuse or alcoholism, something like that. So one of the additives to the mental health clinic services that we're trying to offer out of this facility. So in essence, one of the things that we're trying to team up with the area to ensure that there's lesser drug violence or responses to adding to the mental health issues. I know that there's a large amount of the houseless population as is what we're working on right now because of those heightened amounts of substance abuse and it just adds to the usage or adds to the deterioration of the mental health. So that's one of the issues that they're having.
One thing I'd like to add is, you know, it's certainly a possibility for that to be the case, but we're more focused on the more formal training therapists. That's kind of, you know, what we're exercising, but like obviously we're not going to rule anything out at this point if somebody wants to go ahead and do the work. All for it.
I wanted to address one of the things that you were asking about, the program that we have already developed for out in Kaiser, it's the hybrid model of being able to address the SPMI and co-occurring disorders. That's actually what the program is. It's a hybrid model.
For everyone else, can you explain what SPMI is?
Yeah, SPMI means severe persistent mental illness and COD is co-occurring disorders for individuals with developmental disabilities and severe persistent mental illness. It's a dual diagnosis. So specifically for that population that you were referring to, that's what the specialty of this program is for the hybrid model that we've developed in Kaiser. So that would be the specialty of what we would like to bring and be able to serve both the IDD population and the mental health population simultaneously. And that's why we got the statistics of both the IDD Services and the mental health services here in Polk County, along with the crisis response team efforts here from both the Polk County Sheriff's Office and DPD.
And what do consequences look like for maybe folks that are not kind of meeting the requirements or not meeting or following up on things that, from the therapist level? What do consequences look like?
As in like failure to provide services or?
Patients.
Patients? Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. Failure to be, you mean like for somebody who's enrolled in like a work release type of thing?
Well, if someone goes into the program and they're not progressing or they're just...
Doesn't do the work.
Yeah, they're not doing the work, right.
I see. So in that sense, if it's from like the work released aspect of it, then that would be a probationary failure and then it would default to the consequences of their work release program. With regard to the mental health services, that's technically speaking, that would be an elective thing that they would be enrolled in and they would be doing that for a benefit of their own, of their self, and that's a human right so that we can't implement anything else other than that.
And I'd like to ask what your qualifications are for this program?
I'm the executive director of the agency, acting.
Can you tell me what schools or classes or diplomas that you have?
I went to Oregon State and Portland State for sociology, psychology, and minor in history some time ago now. Let me see, I started the agency with my wife 2018 and we had, we started as a community-based living support entity with a DSA program initially. We expanded from Newburgh to McMinnville from a capacity of 20 to 35, which is now at 50. We then moved over here into Dallas at the end of 2019 after a meeting with the council, grew out of that location there just recently, this last year in 2023, and moved over to the location we're at now. We have also implemented medical, non-medical transportation services as an endorsement as well. We have 24-hour residential services that we offer as an assistive aid for the community. I'm the grant writer that writes the grants for our company and I was the one that was in charge of, and I am the project manager of the behavioral health, mental health hybrid model for...
Do you have any sanctions?
No. Never been, never once has there been a conclusive investigation or anything against the agency.
So if I heard you were, you're working on your bachelor's degree?
No, sir. I finished school in 2013.
What does success look like in your program?
Individuals prospering.
And what is your success rate?
However long that they're enrolled and doing things well for themselves, whatever their goals are. As many ISP goals as we can possibly need or any professional...
I mean, so say you have 1,000 people enrolled in your program, what's your success rate look like? I mean, are you...
It's dependent upon our ability to meet their goals. And an individual support plan...
So have you been able to meet their goals? I guess I'm going to have to ask it like that.
Well, I can give you an example of what the DSA activities program does. Every month, we have a set list of outings or prospective outings every day. There's an alternative internal activity that is scheduled to do as well. Typically speaking, there will be at least one of those activities per month or per week that is directly organized to be an ISP goal to be met for one of the clients that's in the program.
What's an activity? I'm sorry, I'm new to all this.
No worries. So the DSA program is a community, it's a community and sociologically immersive program, or that's the way that we designed it. DSA activities, technically speaking, for the state of Oregon or for the OARs and community-based living support entities is just typically is done with a DSP or PSW, direct support professional or a professional support worker where they're assigned one person that they get to take out into the community. We reorganized this concept to make it a community and social engagement program for everybody to be more involved with each other because technically speaking, the individuals who are enrolled are allotted X amount of hours to do these involvement aspects, but they don't typically get to be involved with each other. So we developed this program so that they can come together and have that integration essentially because they don't typically get those types of things and home providers often don't meet those goals. So we developed this program specifically for those goals and pivoted to make sure that our home providers at our 24-hour residential homes do the same thing. So they have an outing once every week as well.
Hold on, I'm going to wrap this up right now. We have another presentation we have to get through tonight. If council would like more, obviously there's a lot of information. If we would like another presentation from them, we can ask them to come back. And I appreciate your time. I'm sorry for having such a short amount of time. We think an hour and a half's a long time for three meetings, but it's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I provided, I think we provided all the other additional like statistics and acquisition costs within the...
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you both get to sit up front.
So our second proposal tonight, our second proposal tonight is by Polk Community Development Corporation. So I'll invite, is it Kim and Rita? Do you both want to come up and present? So come on up.
Your slides are on the second half up there.
Okay, thank you.
And again, if you'd please speak into the mic as much as you possibly can. If you, yeah, thank you.
My name is Rita Grady. I'm with Polk Community Development Corporation and...
I'm Kimberly Lyle with Polk Community.
And we're really happy to be here tonight and talk to you a little bit about a couple of projects that we'd like to propose and ask for the city to partner with us or will partner with the city, however it goes, because cities, only cities can receive CDBG funds. So we have worked with the city on securing community development block grant funds for a good number of years, using them primarily for housing rehabilitation for families who are, meet a certain income level, putting out their roofs and working with them and some of them, some of them have been loans, some of them have been grants. So, but for, for housing and the development of housing, the governor, of course, is really striking out there, wanting us to build another 23,000 houses a year. That's a lot of units, not necessarily houses, but apartments. And so there's a lot, there is money available for developing apartments. But one of the things that we've discovered is sometimes there's properties that do not have streets going to the property, that do not have, you know, infrastructure. And many years ago, CDBG funds were available for infrastructure leading to affordable housing and then the state just dropped that use altogether and it has been brought back to the surface, not only through the CDBG program, but also through the state legislature at this time. So Polk CDC has been developing housing for a long time. We overorganized in 1989. We talked about this with you before. We have about, developed about 24 affordable housing sites and about 200 units and we probably house about 750 individuals in those units. We talk about, some of those are workforce housing, some of them are housing for special needs populations. And we talk about median income, which is not average income. So you know, if you go to Google and Google all that, you're going to get all different kinds of answers, but we really focus on families that are in this 80% to 50% area median income. And the majority, I would say, of our households have working family members in those households. They don't, a lot of times, make a lot of money because 50% of the area median income isn't very much money. So why do we develop affordable housing? Why do we need affordable housing? And it is primarily because of the area median income in various cities, counties, and so forth. So for example, I put a little example in your handout of affordable housing that serves families at below 60% area median income. That's about $67,000 a year, $67,000, $68,000 a year. You know, you'd go, how many people in our county does that mean or in our city does that mean? Well, we know that about 40% of the city of Dallas is at that income, okay? So that's a lot of people when we have 16,000, 17,000 population, that's a lot of people and a lot of families. So let's just say that they are making $67,000. At 60% of that, 40,000 is what they're making and bringing home. Well, actually subtract 20% for taxes and so what they have is about $32,000 to live on. Divided by 12 months, that's about $2,700 a month. The average rent today is about 1,400 for a two-bedroom unit, okay? That's a lot of money. If the cost of housing to purchase was less, that would be a mortgage payment, you know, a few years back. So 31% of the Dallas rental households are considered severely rent burdened. That means that 50% of their income is going toward rent. So let's say if somebody's on, receives a Section 8 Rental Assistance voucher, that means that that voucher will pay 30% of their income toward the rent and the rest of the rent comes through the Section 8 Housing Voucher Program and that is the rental assistance. So moving on, it's not very easy to build affordable housing. So we're looking for money wherever we can find it. And the CDBG program now is offering grants to cities to support infrastructure that will lead to and support affordable housing. We have two projects that we would like to talk to you about. We've been talking with staff about them, so they're not new to the staff, but they will be new to you. This is a property in our northeast side of Dallas and you can see the street going through there, up at the middle is Pine Street and down below the red is Henkel. We purchased 520 Henkel Street, which is the red and the yellow property. And there's no street there. The street ends right at the outer edges of both of those properties there. There's two long properties, about an acre each. And so we remodeled the house that was at the front of the property and sold, went through all the partitioning and sold it and rezoned the yellow piece into high density. Now, we may not build high density because it's in a residential area, but that's what it's zoned because it's close to high density. There's a trailer park on the east side of the yellow portion. So we would like to, well, I will say also the green and, I think that looks like pink or something, the green and the pink long lot, we're negotiating with those folks. They're interested in selling at least the north end, which is the green portion. And if they do, that would make available the green and the yellow for development of affordable housing. That means that there's no street to that piece of property. Now, the CDBG program is making available to the city a grant to put the street in. And we're proposing we would work with the city, do whatever is needed in order to complete Pine Street, which now just dead ends on the west and dead ends on the east of both of those two long locks. We are proposing that we would do housing for veterans there. And our typical housing for veterans is like a townhome or a two-story building for one, with one bedrooms and so forth. We just finished one, excuse me, property like that on Pine Place, which is just around the corner. So that's one area where we would like to help the city put an application in to get the CDBG infrastructure money. The water sewer is already in the southeast portion of the street, which we could attach and connect to very easily. That's project number one. Project number two is located at the corner, that would be at the southeast corner of Washington Street and Church Street. Now, you can see right across from, on the north side from Church Street, you can take a look at the width of that street. That street is fairly wide and it's Church Street. And if you can follow right down the property line on the east side of Church Street, it goes right through the edge of our property, right there. So to get a better street there and streetside parking for a four or five-story mixed-use building where there would be commercial on the ground floor and apartments on the upper floors, we would need to improve that street. That street is narrow and there's not a lot of parking in that area. This will give you an idea of what that area looks like now. Yes, this, this will give you an idea of what that area looks like now. We do have a building on that red lot, which is our lot. It has, it has two apartments above, at which we would need to relocate those folks, and also our shop and a dog training business currently. And you can see the difference in the street widths on this pretty crazily. It's a very narrow street in there, Church Street is. So what we are looking to do is build something like this. This is our very first rendition. It could change on the exterior because we're just, we want to put as much brick on it as we possibly can to make it blend in with historic, make it look a little more historic. If I had my way, I'd get rid of all the power lines, but that's a multi-million dollar project. But you can see how Church Street would look going along the west side of the building there, and it would provide, it'd really be an upgrade for the city, and it would provide off-street parking for the commercial, et cetera. So there's two projects. CDBG offers the infrastructure grant for a project up to $750,000. And I don't know how much you've provided, Brian, to the cost of this project right here. I believe it's like $950,000, and so we'd need a little bit of extra from somewhere. State legislature is, the governor has really pushed to get infrastructure in the, her bill right now. The League of Oregon Cities had also submitted a bill, and that bill is pretty much dead, and it's that way because it's a repetition of the governor's bill. But the governor's bill is still moving strong, so there's a possibility of getting infrastructure, some infrastructure for cities in addition to the CDBG money. So this project is probably, would not start construction until maybe early or mid 2026. However, the definition of project for the CDBG money is the street project. So as soon as the city would receive the street money, they could start doing the street, or we could start doing the street together. We're working out those details now, so I don't know how that's going to work. But we're housing people, and Public Works is, the city has Public Works, we can hire engineers, whatever, but the fact of the matter is, it's an opportunity right now, I think, for the city to get some money to be able to improve this street and also to cut out a dead-end street and have it go another 120 or 30 feet.
Question? Kirsten?
Sorry, go ahead, Larry. You had your hand up before me.
So Ryan, I read earlier that a local government is limited to two active awarded grants at any given time?
Yeah, and I clarified that in the beginning with Arthur Chapit with Business Oregon. I asked that question because traditionally, we've always been told two, two grant awards. He said, no, you can have three. You can only apply for two during any cycle, so when the grant cycle's open, you can only maximum, you can only have a maximum of two grants applied for, but you can hold three awards at the same time.
Do we have any running now?
We don't.
We have a commitment now.
We made a commitment to the food bank. And so with the understanding that you can only have two was one of the reasons that I brought in both B Squared and Polk CDC at the same time to say, hey, we have two additional applications. Now that we've confirmed with Arthur that you can have three awards, you could fund, you know, all three of these projects as an, as an applicant. There's a lot of things that you still need to figure out. I think it's good to get this information from both these organizations, you know, out for discussion. You know, as Rita mentioned, there's, I think, we did a rough cost estimate to put a legislative ask in for this project at about $950,000-something thousand. We asked for, we asked for $750,000, noting that we could then apply for CDBG grants to make up the difference. That $750,000 did not make it through Ways and Means. It was in a bill, but then it got cut out. And so, so right now, there's no funding that would be a part of this, this project. So you could apply, you know, up to $750,000, but that would be for this project and the Pine Street project, and so you have to figure out how that would be divided, and then where does the rest of the funding come for this project? Is there additional city money, you know, or some other pot that's out there that we could draw from? So there's things that need to be figured out.
Kirsten?
So first, before I ask my question, I just want to acknowledge that both housing safety and mental health safety are kind of that bottom rung of Maslow's hierarchy.
Yeah.
So it's incredibly uncomfortable for me. This competition is just yucky. That's my professional word, yucky. But, so my question is, should this grant not be awarded? Whether or not we apply for it, should it not be awarded? What impact does that do to the building of these two affordable housing projects?
That's a good question.
Great, I'd love a good answer.
Yeah, yeah. So funding to build affordable housing is extremely competitive right now. And the, the balance between the cost of financing outside of the grants from the state and the lower rents for operating, you know, you've got to come up with a balance of that. I don't, I don't have a good answer to that. We have not really built any affordable housing where we had to put infrastructure in like a street.
Can you talk, can you talk more about that in other areas? Because you build all over Polk County. So in other areas, how does that infrastructure manifest itself?
Well, we're looking for land that already has streets around it. Yeah. And like, like the Pine Street, there's no street to connect, there's streets and they dead-end, and they're two long lots, so about 130 feet there. That if, nobody can, nobody can build on the back portion of those properties without putting a street in. A private person, an organization like us, nobody. So that street has to be put in. And I don't think the city's really into eminent domain and capturing that street. So that's why, you know, if we, if, if we can help put that street in, we can build affordable housing and the city has a connecting street. We would have to try to get more funding all over. There's federal home loan bank money, there's rural development, there's the state. And right now, I'm, I'm not going to say that CDBG is the only option here for this because the governor does have a bill that includes that infrastructure. And if that passes and infrastructure is available, we can apply for that and apply for less money from CDBG program. There's like 12 and a half million dollars available in the CDBG program. So they limit what you can apply for, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very quickly, let me, and I think it will be, let me ask, try to ask a more targeted version of what I think part of Kirsten's question was. If, if the street work couldn't be done, would you not attempt to build the buildings? Either or both? I mean, if for some reason, worst-case nightmare scenario, we just couldn't do the street work, would you still attempt to build a building, so would you look elsewhere? No streets, what are you going to do?
Yeah, well, if the city would buy the street from us, and we could get, we could get some money to put the street in, but you know, for us to finance the street and then have to make payments on it or something is just not reasonable. So it'd be hard at Pine Place. We have always struggled to get as much money as we needed for affordable housing. And I, I can't tell you, it might come later, it might take us longer to get the money, you know? I don't know. Good question.
Right.
Yeah, so I have a question, Rita. I understand, it's very clear to me on Pine Street that you need to make a connection in order to develop the northern half of those lots. I'm less clear, and maybe you can answer for the council and for me, what's the need for this street improvement at Church and Washington? Is it that you would like to have it done so that it's widened, you have more on-street parking, or is it required in order to build this project?
Yeah, is it a prerequisite?
Yes, it is required because there is not enough on-street parking. We could downsize our building substantially, and so we would have more onsite parking. Now, this is in a commercial zone, so on-street parking is not required, but where are, where are 45 to 57 families going to park if we don't provide it for them? So it would mean we would reduce the size of the building and maybe not have commercial on the ground floor. We bring it down maybe to three floors and just shrink it, the size of it. But if you drive on Church Street, you will definitely see a difference in the, in the Church Street on the north side and on the south side.
So is that tied to any other funding? Like, are you required to have more? I, I get that you would like more parking for the tenants, so I understand that, but is that tied to other funding for the project to build the structure? Like, are they saying you have to provide so many?
Yes.
Parking spaces? And if you don't have those parking spaces, then you only have so many units?
We do have to provide onsite parking. If we have children, we have to provide a place for them to play, you know? We'll have kids that go to school, we'll want a bus to be able to stop there, so, yeah.
Can the on-street parking be addressed through a variance, or are our hands tied there?
Well, that's why I asked if it was tied to other funding, right? So like, if funding to build the building requires, you know, if the, if the funder says you need to have at least one parking space per unit, for example, and they only provide, you know, 15 off-street parking spaces, and what's existing on-street, and the developer's okay using that on-street parking, the city wouldn't require on-street or off-street parking at all because it's a central business district, right? So it's, that's what I was wondering, if it was a string tied to the money, and that's what Rita's saying it is. So that's where I was unclear.
Larry, did you have a short question, then we're going to wrap this up?
Be easy. How many parking spots are we talking about with that expansion?
Oh, boy. That's a good question. I'll have to get back to you, but there, there's a lot of parking. It's like, I would say, well, there's at least one, okay? So if we have 57 units, there's 57 parking sites, spaces, and in, there's, then parking for guests, parking for maintenance, parking for emergency, handicap parking. So we're probably 65, 70 parking spots?
Yep. At least. They're needed.
Not to mention how beautiful it would be for the city and their downtown business core, so.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We're going to adjourn the work session and read adjourn at 7 o'clock.